Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome. Welcome to the Wareham School Committee Fiscal Year 22 Budget Public Hearing. It's great to have so many people here. The meeting is being held remote on Zoom. It's being recorded and broadcast by WCTV. I will just take a minute to open the school committee meeting. I'm just going to do a roll call because I'm not sure I'm able to see everyone on the screen. So when I just say your name, say that you're here. Mike Flaherty?
Here, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you. Kevin Burjali?
Yeah.
April Rossi?
Yeah.
Mary Morgan?
Yeah.
Thank you. And I'll just take a moment and let the selectmen and the finance committee see if you want to do the same.
Yeah, I'll call the meeting of the town of Wareham Board of Selectmen to order for December 3rd. Judy, can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly, there are four selectmen present, Mr. Titlebaum, Ms. Wysside, Mr. Slavin, and Mr. Propiano, as well as Derek Sullivan, the town administrator.
Good, thank you.
Bernie, are you all set?
Yes, unfortunately, it's pointed on my drawing form. I am missing one. I have Bernie, myself, that is, David, Jody, and Jerry present, and I don't see anybody as yet signed on, so I do not have a quorum as yet.
Okay. And again, I just want to say welcome to all of you here. It's great.
You've got Tom Werthen on there.
Oh, Tom's on?
Yeah, Tom, so you've got a quorum.
Oh, thank you very much. Then I call-
Yeah, he's over on page two. I don't know if everybody knows that when the screen is full, there's arrows to the left and right, you can click there and see the other screen.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Nobody's usually that, there's usually not that many people interested in us to go to the second screen.
But thank you. I'll call the finance committee to order then.
Okay, thank you. And so because there are so many people here, we just want to take a minute to say, just to keep it all organized, if anyone wishes to speak, if you just put your name in the chat, and we'll do it that way so that I don't miss anyone who would like to be able to speak. And with that, I guess I'll just turn it over to Dr. Shaverhood and our interim business manager, Christine Seko.
Thank you very much. So Steve, can we share?
Yes.
I'm not able to get on there to share, Steve.
I'm showing Kim on two separate pieces there, so somehow or another, somehow in two separate views.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, where was the sharing?
Go to the word present. There you go.
Present.
Okay. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Great. Well, a strange way to present the budget, but it's been a very strange year, so I guess it's just fitting. As we develop this budget, and anything that we do in Wareham Public Schools, we always tie back to our vision as we believe that this is what drives our school community forward as we try to create a better world for all our students. As we began building the budget, we looked at making sure this budget continued to ensure the safety, security, and emotional well-being for all our students, that we would meet all legal and contractual obligations and mandates, that we would be able to provide the best possible educational environment, and that we work to not only maintain, but to move our students forward. With anything, our budgets' major drivers included social, emotional, our facilities, transportation, and technology, and of course, our largest budget driver would be contractual cost. At the center of everything we do would be our students. Just to give you some perspective, our historical past budgets, as you see, we've, you know, managed to do some pretty incredible things on a very tight shoestring. This year, when we met with the principals and directors, we asked what they would need to move forward and continue to offer the programming that they felt our students deserved in their schools. So from this list, the high school requested one science teacher, the middle school, a behavior, now a behavior, a BCBA, which would be Behavior Certified, and one paraprofessional. At Minnet Forest, the request, one custodian, a teacher, and this would be at fourth grade, one paraprofessional, four department heads, two unified arts teachers, two cafeteria monitors, and a BCBA. And DeGus Elementary made no request for additional staffing. When you look at the student enrollment, we have the current year, and then we have the projected. This year has been a little different because we've had several students who have chosen to go school choice and also homeschool. We've had more homeschool students than we've ever had. A lot of this, we believe, is due to the situation that we're presently in, and many of the families have said to us that when we are open again, full courses, that they will be returning to school. We also anticipate a rise in our, in the elementary population when we open the new building. School choice, last year we saw a jump, approximately 9.1 students. And the reason why we show, I show this number is with the tuition, it goes into a revolving account, and we're able to pay for things out of that revolving account that we are not able to fund out of the LEA budget. And so now I would turn it over to Christine.
Okay, special education, it's just a summary. We have 484 special education students in the district and 44 special education students out of district. This is just the history of Circuit Breaker from FY14 till FY20. As you can see that it's, you know, it ranges anywhere from 72% to 75%, depending on the state's budget. This year, since we don't have a state budget yet, they're saying to that we get approximately, receive 70%. It could be more than that, but they're telling us on air of caution to expect 70%.
I would also add in there that we never know, year to year, what the percentage of reimbursement would be.
Right. So this, this proposed budget now is with reductions. The first budget we presented to you was a just over nine and a half percent increase in the total budget. The one that we are proposing you tonight is at just over 6%. So with the, some of the deductions, we maybe removed all the requested staff that was shown on a prior slide, just some decrease in supply lines and reduction to our out-of-district special education, private, and collaborative tuitions. Here, this shows you the major accounts with budget reductions, administration, instructional leadership, classroom specialists and teachers, other teaching services, professional development, instructional materials and equipment, guidance, counseling, and testing, pupil services, operations management, insurance, retirement, other acquisitions, improvements, and replacement, and programs with other school districts. So the reduction, the total reduction is $1,930,386, which brings down now the increase in our proposed budget of 6.3%.
And if we could just speak to the administration and instructional leadership, why we see the jump there?
Okay, so in administration, there's three factors that contribute to that big jump. One is the legal, legal fees. We've, we've increased the legal fees due to, we're going to be in negotiations this year and next year, and also for some unforeseen special education rise in legal costs. Instructional leadership, the math and science curriculum is up for renewal. This just shows you with the, the overall percentage on, on top of the whole budget versus the department. So programs are 8.2%, insurance is 0.9% of the total project, projected budget. So this year's budget, we're, this is the net versus the non-net, so the net is $30,502,623. The non-net is $2,050,450, the subtotal bringing it to $32,553,073. And if we consider the revenue sources of $1 million, the total budget would then be $31,553,073. The revenue sources that I, I'm speaking about is to use Circuit Breaker, some COVID funds, and stabilization. So it's 800 or 100, 700 from Circuit Breaker, 200 from COVID funds, and 100 from stabilization fund, equaling $1 million.
And speaking to the COVID funds, last year, the school committee voted to use $500,000 in the COVID funds. What has happened this year, because we've had some, we had some retirements and resignations at the very end of school, and with the help of the town purchasing some COVID equipment, we've managed to only spend 300, approximately $300,000 in the COVID funds, and it certainly is our hope at this point to keep the 200 to use in the next year's budget. And in order to do this, we'll be going back to the school committee to ask them to rescind their vote of the 500 and vote the 300 instead, and then we'll be able to use the 200 into this year's budget. As well, we had anticipated needing the 100,000 from the, the Circuit Breaker Relief Fund. At this point, we do not anticipate needing to access that in this year's budget, and so we would be looking at also rescinding that school committee vote and asking to have it revoted for this budget, and that's how we arrived at using those two amounts. So really, the next step will be moving this forward for a vote with the school committee, and then we will submit the approved number per the town charter to the town administrator prior to the deadline. And of course, we realize that we are not finished once the number has been voted, and we'll continue to work in a very collaborative nature with the school and town officials. And I would just be amiss if I didn't thank the principals, the assistant superintendent, the directors, the business manager, town administrator, finance board of selectmen, school committee, and my budget advisory group for their help as we develop this budget. I would assume you may have questions, and at this point, we'd be very happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
Kim, I just wanted to add that you did supply us with a lot more information. Hopefully, everyone, everyone who's on this meeting received that budget book. There was some more information in there about enrollment and information specific to each school. Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah, and we also provided the line item budgets, and they are also on the website.
Okay, so at this point, I guess I would open it up first to the finance committee and the selectmen, if there are any questions. Sorry, I skipped right over the school committee. Any question?
Okay, Trace, can you define for me between the level funding that we passed last year, 20 million, 29 million, 430,000, to what you're requesting now? What is that figure?
That is 2.1 million and change.
2.122, I believe it is.
Yep.
Include all contractual increases?
Yes, it does.
You have no other negotiations going on?
Well, we will be in negotiations, yes. They're starting this year for next year, so, yes, there is. The ones that we're aware of are the contractual are in there, yes.
Were all your unions in negotiations for FY22?
No. Go ahead, Kim.
Unit A, I believe clerical, and possibly one other one.
Unit B?
Could-
Yes, I think it's Unit B.
Unit B.
A, B, and C.
Yeah.
So that, your largest union is settled for the FY22.
No, it's Unit A, it's being settled. We start negotiations for next year, right this year, so.
I was noticing also in the budget line item, there's no allowance for the new school.
Well, there is, really. So what we've done, they're moving cost that are, it's in the administration, that's, I think we put 75,000 in there along with the 50,000 that has been voted by the, in the fund for the, the building committee fund. When we looked at the utilities, while we kept them separate, we still, when we combined them, we put some significant money back into the area, so we're covered. What we do know, though, is that for maintenance and some other things, we'll have a grace period of at least next year because things will still be under warranty.
Well, that would be servicing, the actual operational costs.
Right.
Looking at, for one, I find it disappointing that there, you haven't broken out that separate entity, which would be DeGus Elementary at Minnet Forest. And that's going to be a cost that you're going to have to absorb for 11, for eight months. And it's 160,000 square foot building, and it's going to be, as projected by the committee, that was employed by Mount Vernon, as they estimate the cost of about 248,000 for a year for heat and light. Doesn't include all your other entities such as water, sewage, et cetera, et cetera. And the fact that nothing, none of that was broken out, you realize, well, it's kind of unusual. You have an article on, for the annual, to turn DeGus over to the selectmen. Puzzled then, at what point do you, the school committee, actually assume care and custody of the new building? Because that date is, the contract date is October 15th.
Yes. I know that you asked the school committee, but if I, if you don't mind, I think that I can answer that. When the, when they turn the building over to us, that's when we assume responsibility. And we have looked at the combined utility cost and the various other heating, et cetera, in the two buildings, and left them separate because at this point, we're operating as separate buildings and not one facility.
Well, if you're operating separate buildings, then the DeGus Elementary at Minnet Forest is a separate building, and you'll be operating the wing from the middle school and the DeGus building, the old building, let's say, use that category, and the new building simultaneously. Now, accounting-wise, the new building should be a separate entity. It's in your operational budget. That's going to be occurring FY22. You'll identify those costs. There's certainly enough documentation produced by Mount Vernon to establish what those costs may be. And I would rather see that as a separate line item in your budget because the other costs are going to continue on. Middle school is going to pick up the entire building, including the wing that the elementary is currently using. Same with DeGus is going to be, have to be utilized for at least January and February when you move everything out. And then you can take, it'll be turned over to the selectmen. But what puzzles me again is that there's an article to turn it over to the selectmen. Should there, in contra, in opposite, that be a building or an article for the selectmen to turn it over to the school committee or the school department for care and custody? It goes both ways. If you officially have to do it with an article to divest yourself of DeGus, the old building, then to assume the new building, it'd be an equal article for the selectmen to do it. Now, that may be a formality and may be a misunderstanding on my part, but I'm sure that the town administrator has to plan in his budget for the operation of the old building when you turn it over to him. But in the interim between October 15th, when the contract for bacon expires and it's turned over to the town, and then the town has to take care, the formality of turning over to the school department, that's when the budgets change. Derek has to figure out how much it's going to be in his budget to take care of that building while it's still in their care and custody. I confuse you?
No.
I'd just like to see it broken out of the budget because it is a separate entity.
We've had these discussions. I've asked these same questions of the superintendent and the business manager, and, and you know, the answer that you gave her is that the money is in the budget in those line items in Minnet and DeGus.
It may be there in the budget, but it's not for that building. That's a separate entity. On October 15th, you theoretically assume control of it. That becomes a separate expense within your budget. It's not one that's, becomes transparent. It's an actual entity that you have to account for, and there's no line items in that budget now. So even if you have inflated the Minnet and the DeGus, let's say, heating and light budgets, it's for those two entities. It doesn't cover the entity, Minnet Forest. That's an accounting function.
Madam Chair, can I pipe up?
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
How hard would it be to do as Mr. Pigeon suggests?
It wouldn't.
Can we just do it?
We would work on that.
Okay.
Sure, we can work on it.
I'd like to see it too. I think we all would.
Good, excellent, excellent.
Other questions?
Are there any other questions?
I do. All right, so we have a much different PowerPoint that we received, then that was shown, and then I'm hoping I can go back and forth. Can we go to the class size page? All right, so I guess my question was, I'll go with the one I've got here. These class sizes, are they, are they with or without, are they adjusted for the, for the new reduced budget?
Those class sizes are for the current staffing that we have, yes.
But for, for the projected number next year, are those class sizes for, do they reflect the reduced? Because, because a lot of the teachers didn't, a lot of the principals didn't get the staff they were looking for, so what are we looking at for class sizes next year?
Right. They would go up slightly, and I think we had that on another, a different PowerPoint that we had shown earlier, what they would go up to.
All right, so, so just for example, middle school, I think I saw, seventh grade was kind of high already. What would that be looking like, perhaps, if, if things stay as is with the current reduced budget?
They didn't, Mike, they didn't ask for any teachers at the middle school. Minnet was the only one, a fourth grade teacher.
Okay, so that, that's-
Look at Minnet, I guess, would be the one that would be affected, that fourth grade class.
Yeah, so, so that says 22 slash 23. What would that go up to?
It would go up to 25, 26 with my current seven classrooms.
All right, so, so just, just speaking for myself, I, I, I don't want to set us up for failure. We're going into a new school. This is our whole strategic plan, and everything says lower class sizes. I think we need to get that down somehow, just moving forward. I, I can't, I can't vote for 25 kids, 26 kids in fourth grade, especially when we're putting them in a brand-new school.
So, Mike, I'm sorry, Joan, could I just ask you to clarify that? Because on this, under this sheet, it says enrollment for fourth grade would go up to 179.
Right, if I got that fourth grade teacher, that would be the eighth classroom. It would be at 22, 23. If I don't get that extra teacher, I keep to my seven classes, and it would be at 25, 26.
Okay, and is there any possibility of, so your third grade would go down from 166 to 149?
Third grade would be at one, yeah, 149 for next year. With the eight current teachers I have, we're looking at 18, 19 in a class.
Okay.
If I drop them, they're up to 22.
If you, if you had seven-
If I had to move a third grade teacher to fourth, which is where I think you're going with that, they would be, they would start at 22.
Okay.
And so that would keep both of yours around the same class size number? 22, 23.
If we shifted?
Yes.
So that's doable with all the, everyone's got the right, you know, licenses and certifications and all that?
It's doable, but the only, the struggle with it is just because we're, they team teach, and they're subject-specific, right? So you have an ELA social studies teacher and a math, math-science teacher on a team, and when you cut that from eight to seven, you've cut half, you know, you've cut half of a team. And so it, you know, you'd have to be kind of creative, and it's not unheard of, but it makes it just difficult in the delivery of instruction and all the things that we're doing. So I think that's what, what Joan is trying to preserve, is how they operate successfully at that school.
And it sounds like that's a really good idea to preserve, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the purpose for, for, for their asking, but we also understand their budget constraints. So we just have to, you know, you look at all of the factors, and I think that's why it was important that she mentioned, that she keep and maintain the structure because it helps our kids a great deal. Doesn't mean that it can't happen and won't happen if we're creative, but it just changes things, you know, it changes them up. So it, I don't know, I guess it could work. It would be better if we didn't have to make it work, but it is what it is. There's only so much money in the pot.
And Joan, to be clear, I was not suggesting that that was ideal.
I understand.
And so, Mrs. Bakayaki, I might have some more questions, but I just want to remind you that it's a public hearing. If there's people from the public that wish to speak, certainly we should hear from them.
Nope, I do understand that. I was just getting through the committee members first. Alan, did you want to ask a question?
Yes, the 9% approximately that you were going to ask for going down to six. Looking at the 2022 fiscal year, from my information from the state that I'm involved with, I know Mr. Sullivan can speak on it as well, we're looking for a good chance, potential, not even level funding from '21 to '22. I don't know how we would come up with extra money in '22 if the revenues from the state actually decreased. The revenues for this particular year, '21, I believe that the school had a slight increase from 2020. The town actually, I think, was the other way slightly. It was only like $100,000 to $200,000 overall, and there's just no way this money's going to be available. I think you're budgeting something that's unfortunately not going to be available that much. And I was joking earlier when I said we need a printing press for money, but I'm not sure how you're going to come up with this money at all. I don't see how the town side can do it either. It's way too high an increase. It's not possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce, if I might chime in with that? I might point out- I might point out that the news you hear regarding the legislator and what they've passed. They have finally passed a budget for FY twenty-one. The level funding they refer to is regarding the current year that we're spending money in. It's FY twenty-one. We're discussing FY twenty-two. Now, how long will it take them to decide on a budget? We don't know. And level funding, which we are currently experiencing and enjoying is probably out of the question. They're going to have a significant shortfall as projected by mass tax, the MMA and even the Superintendent's Association and the School Committee Association, a significant shortfall overall. Now, for us, right now, the monies we spend for the school department to function total is fifty-eight million dollars. That's about sixty-two percent of our entire budget. So we have to function on everything else to get that accomplished. And when there's an increase in the school department for a request, it takes a significant amount of money to satisfy your needs because of your just just your size alone. And so the this budget, I will say, is relatively optimistic for what you anticipate. However, the reality I would suggest and you prepare for is much lower than that and have could have a significant effect on our abilities to move in. We'll move into the new building. But all the services we'd be able to provide may be more limited. We have, I think, thirty-two classrooms in that building. You may not have the staff to staff them all. That's a doom doom and gloom, but unfortunately, I think we should prepare for that and be happy if we have more.
Well, Bernie, I certainly appreciate the fact that you are trying to be realistic and but, you know, we they this budget doesn't include anything extra. When you talk about cutting into services, you're talking about the cutting into the services that they're providing to the children. You they've been asked to to develop a budget that just continues those services. We're not asking for anything extra. There is no additional personnel in this budget. The enrollment is projected to go up next year. And so I will just continue to be optimistic. We have always the school department has always adapted to whatever budget. You know, we're able to whatever we end up with, that's what we adapt to. And so I will continue to be optimistic that we can continue to provide these services.
And very good. And I would love to be optimistic myself. Unfortunately, I do. I've been dealing with figures for eighteen years and I've been on all the peaks and the valleys. And I just know that no matter what department we speak about, everything is critical. And yes, it's it's a large number when we look at your department. However, there's other critical services performed by, I won't call it the municipal side, because all the departments are equal from my point of view. And they're all working hard. They're all trying to provide all the services expected of them. Yes, our children are critical. Yes, the elderly are critical. Yes, the everybody in between is equally as critical. And we just have to make the hard decisions. That's what executive positions are called to do, unfortunately. It's the we do the great things of giving praise and then we do the horrible things of saying we just can't afford to have them anymore.
I know, and I appreciate the collaboration that I've seen in my time on the school committee, you know, between the town and the school and we'll just continue to do that. And I was not implying that the school is any more important than all the other departments in town. And I understand these are unprecedented times. I really do. I just
Actually, Joyce, I would expect it of you to out your school system because that's what you are expected to do.
Well, I'm glad you understand that.
Yeah, and I would expect every other department head to come before the finance committee and say the same thing. And that's what I like them to do. Advocate for their own personal joy. I mean, you enjoy what you're doing. Most of the time.
Okay, Melissa Fay would like to speak. Go ahead, Melissa.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So a couple of things that I'm a little concerned about is I've I have recently had a conversation, a meeting with the directors of the Department of Children and Families, so DCF, for our region is Plymouth County. I also have had a conversation with the Department of Education, Office of McKinney-Bento Legislation, which is our homeless population. And I would say to you that our homeless population and the amount of children who have entered the DCF, the Department of Children and Families network through referrals for neglect and abuse has increased by thirty-plus percent on both sides since COVID has hit. And so we have a lot of families who were kind of on the verge of going into crisis, who now because of COVID, because of the pandemic, have gone into crisis situations. So that causes issues for us as a district in many situations because it causes transportation issues because, as you may or may not know, we are responsible for transportation students who were in our district when they became less and have been relocated to other areas. We are responsible to split that transportation with the district where they end up. So we have a lot of students right now. We have about eight actually that are we're currently trying to find vendors and transportation for who have been displaced from Wareham to other communities because of homelessness. And this is all, again, because of COVID, it's because of losses, because of loss of housing, because of loss of resources. So it's a very serious situation. In addition, we have had an increase of about thirty percent of removals from homes in Wareham to other places, other foster homes, other group homes or group living situations in other districts or other towns because of removal from DCF. So we're faced with, and I have six people on that list, who are waiting for transportation to come back to school. And so I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about situations where parents are wanting more service because their students have disabilities. They're wanting more than two days. So they might be asking for funding for independent outside evaluations, which are a cost to the district. If they request that, we can fight that in the Bureau of Special Education. But it is not prudent to do that. It is not cost effective to do that. And so those those outside evaluations can cost anywhere from two to five thousand dollars to the district for everyone receive. And I'm concerned about that level of request for more restrictive services because it provides families with more options for more comprehensive childcare and more comprehensive care for their children who have disabilities. So I worry about that for us as a district. And I worry about the legal pieces and the legal funding that is involved with that because time that we have to try to counteract that or argue that is a legal cost. So that's another another cost on top of any other costs that we have. And we've had several costs in that area right now. We also have several families who are Wareham residents. And I've had about in the last week alone, just to give you kind of an example, a temperature gauge of what we're four families in the last week who are Wareham residents, but school choice into another district who are asking for out of district placements. And when a family is a resident of Wareham, but school choices into another district, Wareham is ultimately responsible for the cost of that out of district placement. However, we have no say in the programmatic aspect of that. So for example, if a if a child is a student, a school choice student in Carver and Carver decides they can no longer service that student in district, they can make the decision to place that student in our district placement and Wareham puts the bill with little to no say on whether or not that is appropriate. So I'm very concerned about the climate right now. And I'm just I want to kind of voice that because we had tried to build in some safeguards around that in our budget that now have to be cut. And I'm very concerned about that.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Thank you for sharing that. Go ahead, Mike. I think I have a member of the public who'd like to speak, but go ahead.
Okay, Mrs. Fay, would you say there's actually an incentive for those said districts to do that?
Well, the incentive is the legal fees to fight it and the cost of the actual out of district placement falls on the town where the child lives, which is if they reside in Wareham is us. So we have pretty good relationships with most of the directors around us. So we are called to the table to have those discussions. But many times teams make those decisions without us present. And we just end up on the hook for the financial piece of it, which is very frustrating because we weren't there to say we we may have a program that is appropriate and less restrictive and able to handle the needs of that student. But we're not offered that opportunity if we don't have programmatic responsibility. So we don't have the ability or the right sense to make that decision of what the proper placement is for that child. But because of where they reside, we're on the hook for the cost of the placement.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So I will open it up. Are there any members of the public? I do see Lisa Ann. Would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. Melissa, I was glad that you brought up the transportation. I actually work for the transportation department and I've been there for over eight years now. And I find it a little easy uneasy to bring this to you guys' attention, but the drivers want some clarity on this. You know, they love their jobs at one hundred percent committed to the students. But they're not understanding financially why all the runs that are out of town have now been put out to bed. Okay, I know October twenty-six, I personally was informed that there were out of district runs were all being put out to bed. The current run I had, we had for over ten years. There were three children on that run. And they just put those out to bed. And it's due to alleged shortage of drivers. And you know, this affects the children with disabilities and homeless and they get used to having regular people. And the one of the things that I have an issue with is we currently have had drivers resign. We currently had a driver resign because she had someone, one of her children, you know, falling behind and babysitting issues all because of COVID. We had another driver that just resigned because she couldn't handle the cleaning duties and everything. What they're putting on us right now is is crazy. They we have got no support whatsoever. We're advertising. There's nothing on any of the websites, Monster Jobs, Spring School, there's nothing on there whatsoever. Right now, I'm not going to be able to continue much longer. They pulled me from an out of town run to put me in. I told them I couldn't work those hours. They didn't care. They don't care. So this is affecting all our children. Currently, our dispatcher and our transportation manager are both on the road every day due to lack of drivers. I've been in negotiations before and one of our tasks was to assist the manager in recruiting drivers, which our drivers did a wonderful job with. Over the last year, it's been very challenging to recruit drivers. You know, there's a nationwide shortage. Our drivers every tried recruiting other CBL drivers along with parents and acquaintances that are willing to train for the CBL, but most of our candidates aren't receiving callbacks. There's no one in the office to answer the calls.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. So this is really a budget hearing only specific to the fiscal year twenty-two budget?
Why would this would affect the budget if you're taking all the out of town runs and putting them out to bed? That's a huge
Madam Chairperson, may I address this quickly?
Quickly, sure.
No, I would say I absolutely agree with you, but this I have spoken to many members of DSE and also the McKinney-Bento, the person who is liaison for the state for McKinney-Bento. This is a this is a Commonwealth wide issue. And I agree with what you're saying. It is is a very difficult situation. We are absolutely trying our best to to fill all these runs. We've had a lot of companies go under because of COVID who I was contracted out with. And I completely agree and I understand. And I would say that I'd be willing to work with you and with our transportation director to try to work this piece out. But I think it's something to be done outside the scope of this particular meeting. So I'm happy to speak.
I do understand that, but then I would ask for a private meeting then because this does have to deal with the budget issue. I mean, I've went so far to contact the schools and they haven't contacted any of the schools. So you can't have kids that are displaced that need, you know, need rides and with sticking them all out for bed right now. That's a huge cost.
I'm happy to speak.
This really needs to come offline.
Agreed.
It sounds like the best thing is for the two of you to have a private meeting.
Yes, agreed.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public present?
He is pissed.
Lisa, she didn't mute herself. Okay. No other members of the public present who would like to speak? Okay, I see no one. Are there any other members of the committees who would like to speak? Go ahead, Mike.
I have I have some some stuff back in the packet, but just just curious, I'm just not sure how how does Miss Fay's role fit into this as far as transportation?
Because what she was talking about are added district runs and she works with the transportation director.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna I don't know what number a slide it is on yours, but I'm looking at the last slide. That is, you know, it's the net, the non-net in the total. And it has the proposed school revenue contribution as well. So in our contribution is proposed to be a million dollars. And but then the total is thirty-one million, five fifty-three, zero seventy-three. But would the number going to town meeting, would that be minus the million?
That's up to the committee to decide.
Right, but but that if we have that money, that million dollars, we wouldn't be asking town meeting for it.
Correct. We're just proposing that we use those other sources of revenue to offset the budget deficit for next year.
And also, so I looked at the spreadsheet here, the proposed FY twenty-two major account budget with reductions. You did a good job of doing the major accounts and, you know, FY twenty-one, FY twenty-two proposed in the difference. And I compared it with, you know, the one that was spent November third, you know, when we had our all-day thing.
Right.
And some some numbers, a couple of numbers really jumped out. So programs with other programs with other school districts, that was originally nineteen percent of the budget. Now we're looking at eleven percent of the budget. What would what caused that to drop so much?
Programs, well, that's the what we talked about earlier. That's the tuitions for collaboratives and private schools. We had built in a placeholder and we removed part of the placeholder. So what I mean by a placeholder then is if a child would move into Wareham sometime in the in the future and we have to be responsible for that child, whether he goes to a collaborative or a private school.
So we just really over budgeted that originally?
No, I wouldn't say it's over budgeting. I would say that it's a placeholder in case a child moves into Wareham because you never know on a day-to-day basis what student's going to move into Wareham and we need to be prepared if we need to pay for a student to go to a collaborative or a private institution.
Right, but that that placeholder was on November third, it was four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars and today it's two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So how do we make up those savings?
What we did was we reduced the original amount for the placeholder by two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
That's that's a kind of a big swing, right?
Right, yeah. But Melissa, the director, the director felt comfortable with doing that.
Okay. And also
Mike, can I speak? Is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah, so I think when we had to make cuts, it's a very difficult thing to make cuts from a budget. And I think cutting programming that's existing with our students that supports them and gives them access to curriculum and makes them successful in our district is very difficult. So when you're looking at cutting, we try to cut in places that immediately hurt us, right? So when I look at our placeholders, that's where I look at cutting. And unfortunately, in our district, we never know what we're going to get because we have the largest amount of foster care homes and placements in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And so we get a lot of coming through our district who have really high levels of need. And so recently, we received a student who has a very high level of need who came through the And so recently, we received a student who has a very high level of need, who came through the foster system. And we can't control that. We can't, we don't know when it's coming. We don't know how to prepare for it. We try our best to prepare. This is the point of having these these kind of placeholders for these students. And I think we plan as best as we can, but unfortunately, we can't plan for everything. And so when you look at either in our current program and it supports our students who are here right now in front of us. That we know and we care for and we see is easier to cut from places where we're buffering. Where we where we don't know who's coming um than to take away from our students who are here. And so I think that's the reason why we made the decision to cut those placeholders, even though we know we're probably gonna need them, especially in the wake of COVID. And of COVID compensatory services and of all the other uh related things that are gonna happen as a result of this pandemic.
So so if we think we're gonna need them, huh what are we gonna do when we do need them and we didn't we didn't budget it?
But what are our choices right now? And I think that that's the question. Are our choices that we look, because our options are are becoming slim right now. Do we cut our program for our students who are in front of us? Or do we lessen our placeholders for students who may come that we don't know if they're coming yet? And so I think that that's the major piece that we have to look at. And that's the reason why we chose to cut in this particular area instead of cutting from our programming that exists for our students who are actually physically in front of us right now. It's a tough decision in 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 any in any in any scope.
Yeah.
Thank you, Melissa.
And what I would also say would be, when we're looking at the circuit breaker, we hope to have. Approximately two hundred to three hundred thousand left in the circuit breaker this year. We would not anticipate spending the entire amount in to help offset next year's budget. And that we would still have a small cushion in the circuit breaker fund that would help absorb any unexpected cost. Of students moving in or um students here that needed to have some extra services.
Can I ask a quick question?
Uh hold on April, Mike, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I just so with the McKinney Bento for, as Melissa had stated, those students that we are responsible for. Busing that had been displaced due to homelessness, we get reimbursed for that, but not until the following year. Is that correct?
Christine, you wanna take that or you want me to?
Yes, yes. It's not till the following year, but it's a small, it's a small amount. I think that the last time I knew it was like thirty percent, twenty six percent. Is that correct, Melissa? So it's a small.
It ranges between thirty and thirty five percent and you have to remember, it's a split between the district where they became displaced. And the district where they land. So if they became homeless in Wareham but moved to New Bedford. That transportation cost is a split between those two districts. And then it's only refunded at that thirty to thirty five percent.
But it's it's none of it ever comes in the year of, so it's nothing that it can like revolve back into to, okay, I was trying to.
Correct, correct.
Works. Okay, thank you.
When you when you report the expense, the year after you report the expense, that's when you get the reimbursement.
And there's also reimbursement through circuit breaker for some of the transportation. Do however, because of COVID, that is a new set of reimbursement that was put on hold this year. Um and so some people got it, some people didn't, but we were not a recipient of that yet. We may still be. Um because of COVID, uh we we didn't receive that reimbursement.
So for this particular cohort of families that have been so drastically either displaced or have um DCF involvement or things like that. Are there any legislative things in the works to compensate districts for that because of COVID? Specifically that you're aware of, or is that something that hasn't been brought up on a state level yet? Um as sort of a a way, like a way of specific aid due to. It I mean, I I know that these problems happen regardless, but the scale that they're happening. Because of the pandemic and people not being able to work and with the, you know, the eviction moratoriums and the. Um the housing situations being what they are. Do you do you know of anything or has DUCY come down and said, hey, this is going into the legislature? We are looking to try to get some sort of legislative coverage or reimbursement for these particular. Families or these tuitions or these services to come back to the district or is that not in the works at all that you're aware of?
So currently, it is in the works that people are looking for some type of reimbursement on top of the COVID reimbursement. That has already been allotted to districts. People are looking for this additional support for the homeless. And evento and the DCF displaced families. But unfortunately, nothing has been kind of written in stone yet, so we have no answers. But I do know that that from my meetings with DCF and my meetings with McKinney Bento and DUCY, that is something that they're looking to explore. But now the situation with the state and the funding clearly is is not good. Due to the fact that so much money had to be put into COVID reimbursement to districts. And so I think that right now it's it's something that people are definitely talking about, but it's not anything that has been written in stone. I I don't anticipate or trust that it's gonna happen anytime in the near future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um Mary Morgan has been waiting to speak. Go ahead, Mary. Mary, are you there?
Yeah, I am. Sorry, I was just surprised. Um so I I just. And now we're sort of really on a different subject, but I wanted to um. Ask about the out of district transportation. I know that you you know that it was supposed to be tabled and all that, but the only. The only question I have is um cost effectiveness of making it totally. And you know contracted out in and not allowing our own people to do some of it. That's that's the only question I have about is.
Mary, do you mind have this conversation outside of this meeting? Just.
That's fine. I had a feeling you'd say that. Okay.
No, so I'm sure that tomorrow, Melissa or Kim can answer that question for you.
Okay, absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I and I would just say whatever comes out of those discussions, could you just follow up with the full committee on whatever comes out of that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions or comments from anyone else here in the? Go ahead, Mike.
Joyce.
Oh, sorry.
What, how do we, what's the run rate on the twenty one uh budget? Are we behind? Are we ahead? What what do we project that's gonna end up it being the actual?
Um as far as what's being spent in the current year?
You're five months into the year. How are we doing?
Um, everything that I've seen indicates that we're doing okay. Christine, do you wanna add to that?
Yeah, um you know, we're we're five months in and we're looking pretty good, but um you know, we still need to get through the winter. And see what happens, you know, with this pandemic, where we're gonna be. So as of right now, from my past experience, looking at the reports, yes, we're doing okay right now, but that could definitely.
What is okay?
Pardon me?
What's okay?
Well, we're not overspent on any lines and it looks like for forecasting that we're gonna be okay.
All right, so it looks like from the discussions have gone so far that you've got to go into a room. And come out with a budget that is at thirty million six twenty two. And and then show people what it what it will do to the education process. And you you you're pushing water up a up a hill. You're not gonna get there. You're not gonna get two million dollars uh higher in fiscal year twenty two than you are in twenty one.
You know, Mr. Worthing, I think we realize that, but part of our charge is to show what we. As educators need to support our students. Um and that's what we've always done. And what we will do now is work with the committee and go back and make the adjustments that we need to do. But in our opinion, as educators, this is the budget that we need to support our students. But we've always lived within our means and we will continue to work collaboratively with the town and do what we have to do.
But you can't go in front of the town and give them a budget that you know that you you're gonna is gonna be overspent.
And I and I understand that. And whatever budget that is adopted and that's voted at town meeting.
That's. The town has to understand what the limitations are in terms of the service you provide at the lower number.
You're exactly right. And when we come up with that lower number, what we will have to do is to. We'll be laying it out for the people.
That that's gotta be your plan B.
I understand that.
It has been plan B every year.
And plan C, D, and E.
Yeah.
Got that right. Every year, same conversation.
Yeah.
And Joyce, may I add that the expectation is that your your people. Will provide for us the knowledge as to what you need and what the harm will be if we aren't able to fulfill it. We've always worked well together, all departments, no matter what their responsibilities or who they've served. And and unfortunately, these circumstances are beyond anybody's control. And I would be very pessimistic to suggest that uh your plan B be a level funding of what you have this year. I don't anticipate on the municipal side, they will fare any better. In fact, they may fare worse. The money just isn't there in our revenues and it is, I don't anticipate it will be there with the state. And the federal, they keep talking about a lot of things, but I unfortunately don't see it filtering down to our level on any great amount. It's disappointing that uh the impact it will have on you as well as all the other departments. But um bottom line is the bottom line.
No, and I appreciate what you're saying, Bernie, and I appreciate your position and but. We're, this budget doesn't include anything that isn't needed. So when when you say come back with what what you need, this is what the what is needed. Um the school, everyone in the schools is being asked to do more and more with less and less all of the time. And everyone is uh throughout the town, I understand that. But to and I know that you didn't mean it this way, but what we're asking for is what is needed. There is that you, that implies that there's something that's not needed and that's just not true. And like like everyone said, well, you know, we'll we'll work with what we have and we'll do our best and. But what what we're asking for is is what is needed.
Oh, indeed, and I apologize for the misinterpretation. I expect that you will tell me exactly what you need. Uh what you can get by with and what you would prefer to have. Because I make a decision as a manager, as I did in private sector. I have to make a decision with all the knowledge and all the information. Then I have to make a decision. And that doesn't necessarily mean I've ignored the needs. I just can't provide the needs. And it's a sad state of affairs. And getting into that circumstance, unfortunately, and yes, I I have grand, great grandchildren. In school systems now and they're all suffering, unfortunately. It's not an easy task that we have, Joyce, I know.
Yeah, it's not. Okay, so is there anyone else? Are there other um school committee members who didn't get to speak? Oh, Mike, I'm sorry, I cut you off before. Sorry.
That's okay, but I see April had her hand up. I I've talked a lot, let her talk.
Thanks. I just I just had a more of like a a a sort of like a statement. And I know that in the past, we have had to do a lot of cutting and budgeting and redirecting. And I think that we always do as a as a parent of a student in the district, we always do. Um amazing things with what we're what we're handed. And a- as Joyce had stated, this is stuff that we need. And when the schools have a need and those needs are filled and we have an excellent and and excelling school system. That trickles down to the rest of the town. People want to move here based on a school system, whether with with their opinion. That helps with people coming into the town, which will help more revenues and help other companies want to be and build and. And be a part of the community that we all love so much. So I think it starts a lot of the times with the schools and the kids. There are so many families and and people and even employees in this town that grew up here. And we're a product of of our school system and that says a lot for the district. And for the community as a whole of how they wanna pull together and then come back and raise their own families here. And encourage other people to do so and believe in their system. So I think that if we're able to, you know, a- appeal to the people in the town, the people at the town meeting that come. Those are the people that really genuinely love the town of Wareham. And if they get to see, you know, and comprehend fully what we're asking for. They'll know that it's beneficial for the entire town, not just the school district.
Thank you, April. Go ahead, Mike.
Just um in the pie chart on on the handout that we have, I noticed uh guidance accounts for five point three percent of the budget. Like what what's in there? That seems like a lot. Anyone?
Yeah. I think s- some of it's just supplies, materials. We also have testing items in there. And we could get you a list. We we'd have to go back to each school and pull their line item list. But we could do that and put it together to show people.
Dr. Shaverhood, may I, may I speak?
Sure.
So a lot of um the money that I put in from my budget into our guidance department. Has to do with social emotional learning and has to do with the um different um programs that we run. So it has to do a lot with um social thinking and those curriculums that cost money to run and cost. Uh money in training for our staff. And so that's part of the guidance budget for me. I know I can't speak to the rest of it. But that's a a big part of my budget is that as well as testing. And um curriculum materials that they use to support our students in social in the social emotional learning realm.
The other piece is it includes the guidance counselors as well as adjustments counselors and psychologists.
Yes.
Alright.
All three.
So yeah, so I would expect it to include the guidance counselors, but I didn't expect what you just said, you know.
Yeah, well, part of the major accounts that includes, you know, testing and assessment that Melissa alluded to. And then also the psychological services and psychologists and adjustment counselors all fall into that major account.
And the cost of the um the testing materials for our psychologists is it's it's a large amount. As we have to have a variety of different tests depending on what level a student is across BK to twelve plus. So it's a large amount of testing materials that we have to keep up with. And those testing materials update every couple of years to a more recent version. We really have to keep on top of.
Alright, no, I thank you. You don't have to break that out anymore, Kim. That explains it what that what Christine mentioned.
Okay.
And 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 Ms. Faye, thank you.
Go ahead, Kevin. Kevin, go ahead. Is he muted? Oh, Kevin, you did.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Yes, yeah.
Um so I'm new to the process by the process, Kevin, and we came in as the committee with level service. Knowing that that's what that's for students. I'm hearing Mr. Worthing say, I believe. We better look at level budget or level funded, not level service. And then I'm hearing Mr. Pigeon say, don't anticipate even that. So I know as we try to come up with this budget. What is the bottom line? Or does nobody know what the bottom line is yet? And when can we be informed of that, like what's a realistic number? We should be shooting for to try to get budget as feasible for for everyone.
That was a little choppy, but I think we got the gist of what Kevin was saying.
Yeah, madam, madam chair, if you if you don't mind, I think uh I think that steers towards uh. Towards me. So you're asking um for the projections. And I think the best answer is they're just settling this current fiscal year's budget. When we set the budget back in uh back in, well, June of this year. So trying to really pinpoint it. Uh my goal is to get both the town and the school a two percent increase for next year. The reason being what. The reason being what we've cut out from the budget this year plus being conservative on our estimates. That is my goal to get those funds in. 2% is not, I understand it's, it's not a level service budget for anyone. I would really take that as a, as a decent estimate. We're going to see some, there's some good news out there. Upper Cape Tech is, I think it's down about seven students. So we'll see, we shouldn't see a big increase from that end. We're going to see a couple hundred thousand on the pension costs. I'm hoping with the continuing trending, I'm on the Mayflower Municipal Health Group Steering Committee where I originally met Christine. So that's the, they're doing really well. They have a, we have a nice surplus of revenue. So I'm hoping we can stay with increases like the, the 2%, which will be very helpful. But all in all, if you remember, we brought 600,000 into this fiscal year's budget from the stabilization fund. We cut unemployment out of the annual budget and started paying, paying it through free cash. We cut back on some of the debt line surpluses. We basically, we made the, we waved a magic wand to get, to get this year's budget together. So, you know, I think working with, with Dr. Shaverhood and what, what the entire school staff does, I think about them a lot. It's like my department heads that we continue to do a lot of great work with, with not too much increases. And I don't know where the tipping point is, any of us, but, you know, for instance, we're, we're still at the same staffing for the police department from the 90s. And I think if anybody knows the growth of this community, you know, that, that is, that is way out of line. So that was long-winded, Kevin, I apologize. But it's my goal to get 2% and I'm sorry that that's a, a goal. I wish it was, it was much higher for everyone.
All right. Thank you, Derek. Appreciate that. Anyone else? So I just wanted to, it's actually a repeat of what I said last year. This process, it frustrates me because on one day, we hear from all the principals and directors about everything that, you know, is necessary to move forward to the next year in their budget. And it's exciting. It's exciting to hear them talk about what's going on in the schools and what they're hoping, hoping to accomplish. And then within a few weeks, we're right back here. And it's the same thing every year and that's the process. But I just wanted to say again to all the principals and directors and superintendent, everyone that you were heard. It may not seem like you were, but you were. And, you know, we'll just continue to work as hard as we can to make sure that you have, have what you need. Pretty, pretty much exactly what I said last year. So again, Bernie, I will remain optimistic.
Thank you, Joyce. And to say that I compliment your entire staff. I've talked with Andrea and Kim several times and I listened to your meetings with, basically the last one, when you had all of the department heads appearing before you and they were very optimistic. And I was enthused listening to them and what they've accomplished. And they're moving forward. Everyone is. There's a fantastic reading program going on. Scott's High School is getting accreditation for certain accomplishments they have. Our points in MCAS are moving up. And with all that, and we have to confront the budget and say possibly all that is fragile success. But I can assure you, we readily understand how hard everyone is working. And we are so pleased at the success that they've had with such modest resources. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, I just want to thank everyone for being here. It's great that so many people were able to join. Thank you.
Joyce, Peter wants to speak up.
Oh, he does?
Yeah.
I didn't see it. Okay, go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to echo some of what Bernie said. You know, the, the job that there were in public schools, from the administration, the superintendent, the school committee, the teachers, the staff, the substitutes, everybody who's involved have done, I, I think, a tremendous job in dealing with the pandemic. And, you know, we're well aware that teaching and trying to run a school system under any circumstances is challenging. It's doubly or triply so during a pandemic. And I think people in town should be proud of the job that the school department has done to try to bring a sense of normalcy while continuing to, you know, try to inculcate the kids with knowledge, get them prepared for life, deal with all of the other issues that arise out of the pandemic. And that's not, not something we heard tonight directly, but it was alluded to in a couple of the line items. You know, the, sort of the counseling services, the support services, all of those things. The strain on those in the middle of a camp, in, in the middle of a pandemic has to be even greater than what it normally is. So we, we understand what you're laboring under. You know, we have our own issues, you know, on our side of the parking lot. You know, unfortunately, this becomes a whittling process every single year. You know, the department heads and ours do the same on, on our side of the parking lot. They come forward and they say, well, to really do the job, you know, we need this, that, and the other thing. And we'd like to get that piece of equipment because the other one's 40 years old and falling apart or whatever. But as we go, you know, deeper and deeper into the budget, we just wind up whittling a little bit. And at, at the end of it, it's not fun for anyone. It's not fun for the town administrator. It's not fun for the superintendent. Those are the two people who drive most of the process. But at the end of it, we managed to survive and move on and get the job done. And I'm looking forward to doing that again, even if the challenge is greater this year. So I'd like to thank everybody involved in this process for what they've done and what they're about to do.
Thank you, Peter. Mike?
Yeah, and just, just want to add that this is the first time I've attended a Zoom meeting where it's typing all the words at the bottom that everyone says. I'm not sure how accurate it is, but I want to thank Derek for, for having a goal of 200% for the schools. That'd be, that's great. Thank you.
It, it's in writing now, Mike, right?
This is forever, forever saved. Thank you so much from the bottom of our heart.
Eric, you're fired.
I'll be submitting my resume.
Am I the only one who can't see that? I, I can't see that on the bottom of the screen. All right.
Center of the bottom.
Not mine. Oh, well. So if there's nothing else, I would just ask for a motion from a school committee member to adjourn our meeting.
So moved. Mike Flaherty.
Is there a second? Hold on a second. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin? Yes. Mike?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And again, thank you to everyone.
Peter, you need to.
I need a motion to adjourn the selectmen's meeting.
So moved.
Oh, you beat Alan to it. Can I get a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Patrick. Roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim? Jim, you there?
I'm here. Yes.
Yes to that. Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, we are adjourned. 500. Thank you.
Finance committee, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Can I have a second? Motion's made, seconded. Roll calls. Bernie, yes. David?
Yes.
Jody? Still there, Joe? Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you.